Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of October 7th will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. When we get to the public hearing section, the commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, and then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. We will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, we'll get to the second item on the agenda, and that is the election of a chair.
I would motion to keep Janet Phillips as our chair.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes three zero, or three one. The next item on the agenda is election of a vice chair.
I make a motion to nominate Riley Williams as vice chair.
I would second that. We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes four zero. All right. Next item on the agenda is general orders. We have an item to request a waiver for subdivision requirements, SEP C-2501, and we shall hear from staff.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Henry Wheelheimer with Development Services. And tonight, we have a special exception request for 5823 North Perkins Road. This request is to alleviate sidewalk requirements for a new residential development. Here's an aerial of the property outlined in pink. As you can see, this property is just east of Perkins and about a quarter mile south of Burris. This property is across the street from the Canyons and just north of North Tower Park. Here's the street view where you can see the property. This is from Perkins looking east. The property is currently vacant, and they have submitted a building permit to build a single-family residence on the property. While reviewing that building permit, as a part of the review process, is sidewalks. So the sidewalks came up during this. They requested alleviation under the land development code. If the property is over two and a half acres, then the planning commission does have the authority to review a special exception for sidewalks if it is determined that these sidewalks would cause a hardship or inequity. So that's why we're bringing it before you today. Here's a zoning map where you can see the zoning on the property is RSS or small at single-family residential. To the east, you see A or agriculture, and to the north and south, you see IG or general industrial. I guess to the north is residential, and north of that is general industrial. Here's the future land use map where we have both commercial and high-density residential being called for for this property. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, I have a question, and to use a very non-technical term, if the sidewalk was put in, this would be a sidewalk to nowhere.
Yes, I'm only hesitating because there is a development going to the north of this. I believe it's one lot to the north, so not directly touching, that is required to put in a sidewalk as a commercial development. This exception does only apply for residential uses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then as another note, there is sidewalks on the west side of Perkins as well.
There's no crosswalk at this immediately, at this immediate location to reach that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know where the closest sidewalk would be, but not in the vicinity that I'm aware of.
And the speed limit there is fifty? Fifty, fifty-five?
Fifty.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five. Hold the audience for that one.
Okay. Well, I would say typically, I'm a huge sidewalk proponent. I like to see connectivity throughout the city. This is kind of a unique situation because it is really out here by itself. And that's, there was an estimate of hardship of what the, what this cost would be, which is fairly pricey. And to clarify, you said there is a development going in. Is it adjacent to this piece of property?
I believe it's one lot to the north.
Not the one touching?
So it's, this lot right here is being developed as a commercial development? Sorry, I'll turn my laser pointer on so you can see it.
Previously, we had, previously, we had some process where you could waive a sidewalk until another sidewalk touched your development, and then you were required to put one in. Is that still the case on, if this waiver were to be granted?
No, ma'am. So there, and I've worked with similar processes where it's kind of like paying...
Pay like a deposit into...
Yeah.
A fund that could later be used.
Yeah. I can't think of the words for that, but yes, that exactly. I don't believe that is being used right now as a, as a way to alleviate the sidewalk requirement. So at this time, the only alleviation we have is just waiving the sidewalk requirement.
Just a permanent waiver for this piece of property?
Yes, ma'am.
Permanent waiver for this piece of property, or permanent waiver as long as it remains single-family residential? Under this owner, or will it carry over to the next?
Yes, sir. So I believe the waiver is for this development, so when they're building this house. But for example, if it were, if it were burned down, would they have to build the sidewalk? That's a good question.
That would be the, that might be the question. If they sell it, I'd believe that they were grandfathered in basically under this waiver. If it became a different type of, like they tear it down, become a different development, then that would be, had to come back.
I believe so as well.
So as long as it remains single-family?
Single-family and continues, yeah.
So if the lot were to split, so it says, we have, this is a 10-acre parcel, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if the lot were to split ownership, then it would just be the portion along, would then, would it come into effect then?
I think it would depend on what that lot split, where it's splitting. So I think there would be a lot of what-ifs in that scenario. It possibly could be grandfathered in, possibly not. It just depends on what that lot split would look like and then what's going in.
I don't know if I followed that.
The lot split?
Yeah. So currently, one resident is being placed on here.
One house.
Three years from now, they decide they want to split that into five two-acre lots and sell and develop those. At that point, does our waiver from tonight stay in effect, or does it go away and the developer then does need to put a sidewalk on that frontage?
I would have to confirm, but I believe it would be grandfathered in if they continue just to split those into residential homes, if it all was going to be used as residential. Is that your understanding? But I think the question might become different if it was split into, used as a commercial lot versus a residential lot.
So I think, I think my question would be, is the waiver specific to the zoning, or is the waiver specific to the development, or is the waiver specific to the ownership?
If single-family residence is proposed, on an unplotted tract larger than two and a half acres, the planning commission may waive any or all of the subdivision requirements to avoid substantial hardship or inequity.
A caveat I would add in is, for example, if they were splitting it into five two-acre tracts, that would have to be platted. And if you were to plat this to build a neighborhood, sidewalks would be required. So I think this waiver is just for this single-family house. I also have been thinking through, because I'm not sure what my answer is, but I'm also thinking that if, for example, there was a lot split, that split this in half right here, so you're splitting that frontage on Perkins, I think the second house, whenever it was applying for a building permit, would also have to come back and get an exception for their frontage on their lot. So I think you're just approving...
If it's the frontage part though, only.
Yes, ma'am.
That's gonna be like, there's a lot of what-ifs.
Well, it would be a lot of what, a lot of what-ifs, but if there was another, if you split it into multiple parcels, then there could be another street, and then the sidewalk would be along the street, frontage the internal street to the 10 acres?
I'm not following, but I think Sarah's following.
Yes, ma'am. So for example, if there was a road coming down the middle with lots north and south?
Correct.
You would have to have a sidewalk on at least one side of that internal local street.
Correct.
At that time, you would also be required to build sidewalks along Perkins.
Even if there was a variance?
Yes, ma'am. I believe, and I could be wrong, so Cam, correct me, but I think you're just...
I think there's enough question. I would feel better if we would table this and get these questions answered.
Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
Okay. Chair moves to table this to the next planning commission date, which is October 21st.
And just to clarify the questions that you would like to be researched, if it was split into multiple residential lots?
Yeah, does this...
Or if it was split into commercial versus residential?
And does the variance hold with the ownership, or the...
Kind of, it's not ownership, but I'll make sure.
And so with the zoning, or with the plating, I suppose? Does that...
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay. So there's a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes four zero. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. We will see, receive public comment for a special, for a specific use permit, SUP 2504, and we will hear from staff first.
Yes, ma'am. So this is a specific use permit for 1525 South Western Road. This is to allow for healthcare facilities in the CS or commercial shopping zoning district. Here's the aerial view where you can see the property outlined in pink. This is on the very southern edge of Fountain Square on the east side of Western. Here's the street view where you can see the existing vacant property with that infrastructure built for commercial development. Here's the zoning map where you can see the property is on CS or commercial shopping. The applicant is proposing to build a kidney specialist facility that would fall under the general category of healthcare facility, which does require a specific use permit in CS or commercial shopping. Looking at the surrounding zonings, we have P or public to the south and southwest. We have CS or commercial shopping to the north and the east. We have a small dislivver of A or ag, and then RSS or small at single-family residential to the west side of Western. The future land use map does call for commercial uses at this property, and I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
The question I have is, I was curious, what zoning would allow this by right?
I'd have to double-check to be sure. I believe CG or commercial general does allow it by right, so it's just a slightly more intense commercial use.
Okay. And then follow-up question is, this would be a medical office, and oftentimes, medical office is looked at to have a higher parking turnover than, say, commercial general. Does the number of parking places that would be associated with this particular address meet the number of parking that you would need for commercial general? It's a comment on the...
We're still trying to get clarification on that ourselves.
Okay.
But that would be dealt with on the building permit side after our approval, pending our approval tonight?
Yes.
Is there not a, I want to say i-doctor, just directly to the north of that, or a different...
I was thinking it was a dentist office.
A dental office?
It was a dentist office.
So did they do the same thing for that one as well?
I believe so, yeah. Roughly six years ago.
Yeah. So there's already a specific use permit for this type in that area?
There is, but I think that as further exacerbates my question on medical office parking.
Right. But they're saying that they'll just take care of that on the building permit side, pending our approval.
But if there's not space to add additional parking?
Then they'll shut that down and they won't get a building permit, right?
Correct.
We're just determining if it's appropriate for this use.
Gotcha. Okay.
I can clarify on the parking. The parking is a per square footage of the building, so when they submit for that building footprint, they'll say, you know, X amount of square foot, and we'll say this amount of parking is required.
Gotcha.
So there's always options to decrease that if they needed to decrease the size of the building or anything, but this would not grant any sort of exceptions or variances to parking, so they will have to meet that requirement one way or another.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. So we give an opportunity for the applicant to come forward if they're here this evening. Hi. You could just state your name and address for the record? Yeah, come on up.
My name's Jason Grayson.
You might want to pull the microphone. Just, there you go.
Jason Grayson. Oh, my God. The camera adds at least 50 pounds. Okay. Jason Grayson, what else do I need to...
Address.
Of the...
No, your, your address?
Oh, 3545 Valley Creek Road, Edmond, Oklahoma, 73034.
Thank you. You could...
Just tell you what it is?
Sure.
It's gonna be a home dialysis unit. There is another dialysis unit in Stillwater. It doesn't have, I ran that dialysis unit for 20 years, so I know a little bit about it. This is gonna be owned by physicians. I am an owner in that as well. But they don't have the capabilities to provide this type of dialysis opportunity for the patients. This is, what we would do at this unit is train patients to do home dialysis, so they would be able to do dialysis at their home instead of having to go to a dialysis unit three times a week. So that's what it's gonna do.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item to please come forward. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
Yes, ma'am. So the land development code does allow for healthcare and social assistance in CS or commercial shopping district with a specific use permit. The proposed kidney specialist clinic aligns with the comprehensive plan, which calls for commercial uses for the subject property location.
Thank you.
The alternatives are to accept, table, or to recommend approving, tabling, or denying this application. Staff recommends alternative number one, which is to accept the findings and recommend the city council approve the specific use permit as presented.
Unless there's any other discussion, I move that we accept the findings and recommend the city council approve the specific use permit as presented.
I second the motion.
So I'll just, I'll just make a statement before we vote. I'll just let you know, I had a loved one that was a dialysis patient for several years, and I think this is a wonderful service you're providing because our family had to deal with that multiple times a week, going to the hospital. So I think this is a great service. With that, we have a motion and a second, so we shall now vote. Motion passes four zero. Next item on the agenda is a short-term rental application, STR 0217. We'll hear from staff.
Yes, ma'am. This is for a short-term rental license at 902 East Lauren Lane. Here's the aerial view where you can see this property just east of Academy and the Neighborhood Market, which is on Perkins and north of Lakeview. You can see the property outlined in pink there at the end of the cul-de-sac. I'll just go back to here real quick. So with short-term rental applications, whenever one is submitted for a license, we send notices out to all the neighbors within 300 foot of the property, and so they have the opportunity to submit a letter of objection. If any of those neighbors do submit a letter of objection, that's them letting us know they would like us to hold a public hearing so they can speak any concerns that they have, so that planning commission can be the ultimate deciding body of whether a short-term rental is the appropriate location, if this is an appropriate location for a short-term rental. So for that reason, we brought this before you today. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for staff?
Are there any other short-term rentals in this neighborhood?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, so that's...
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Would like to give the applicant an opportunity to come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brett McElroy, and we reside at 4820 Country Club Court here in Stillwater, 74074. The purpose, obviously, is the short-term rental, but it's also for family for extended stay. So we have young kids, grandparents coming to town, they're getting older, weekend trips, don't really do it, they come weeks at a time. We've looked into having traditional long-term rental, but it doesn't fit for our family's needs because now they don't have somewhere to stay when they visit. To answer the question about other short-term rentals in the direct neighborhood, I haven't seen any, but I will say they're full of college rentals directly to what would be the south of Lakeview. There are several short-term rentals there. I don't know about their permitting and their licensing, but I do know that they're available on the websites, Airbnb, VRBO, so on and so forth.
Are you planning on using Airbnb, VRBO?
Airbnb.
Okay. And what is your screening process gonna look like? Can you speak to how many people you intend to rent to? Parking situation? Minimum stay? And what type of clientele you're gonna be looking for specifically? What's your target market?
Yeah. So target market is gonna be a little bit, I would say, higher end for a short-term rental in Stillwater. It's a fairly new house, made some updates, added irrigation, painting, things like that. It's not something that we want run down. We're really targeting adults, people coming to visit kids in college, football games, graduations, so on and so forth. The screening process is we have to approve everything, so they have to actually directly contact us for any approval process that way. So the house is currently set up to have probably a maximum of six occupants. One room set up for smaller kids with twin beds, the others are couples.
What type of rules will you be enforcing on your applicant, on your potential renters?
I think just, you know, standard, we want it taken care of, right? We don't intend for, parking was mentioned, there's a two-car garage and two-person driveway there. I would say, I'm not sure on the image that was posted there, but the street's fairly congested, as is with college rentals. That currently is not the case with our property.
Will you have a no-party policy?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I would happily accept any noise complaints that came, you know, from people not following the rules.
I think some of the other questions we often get is, have you, have you had an opportunity to speak to any, any of the neighbors to let them know that they could contact you if there was an issue?
We are friendly with the, the closest neighbors directly to the south of us. They, you know, come over when we have in-laws and things in town, so no, no one directly adjacent contested. I would say the contestee is probably about the furthest away that it could be from the property, within the 300 yards. It's actually not even directly on the street, so...
And then I think lots of times, we like to know who's gonna be responsible for, say, trash pickup, because, you know, trash carts are once a week here in Stillwater as your resident. Would you be responsible to...
Yeah. We've been responsible for that. We, again, we use this property for our personal use already, so we're familiar with that, and we haven't had any issues there. We have cleaning service already set up as well, things are taken care of, so... And one other question, Mr. Williams has is longevity of stays. That's gonna be somewhat dependent on, you know, the environment. We want longer stays. We do have minimum number of days, especially on weekends, but ideally, it's still gonna be short-term.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that is in favor of this to come forward. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings. Findings and alternatives?
Yes, ma'am.
Findings.
The alternatives tonight are to approve, defer, or deny the application. That's what we got.
All right. Thank you.
I would say that the applicant meets the general criteria for what we look for in a good short-term rental owner, and I would motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes four zero. The next item on the agenda is a short-term rental application, STR-0218, and we shall hear from staff again.
Yes, ma'am. This is a short-term rental application for 2614 North Circle Park. Here's the application, here's the aerial view where you can see the applicant's property outlined in pink. This is just west of Perkins Road, kind of across the street from Oak Park Village Apartments. Once again, same general spiel as last time. When a applicant applies for a short-term rental license, we send out the notice to all the property owners within 300 foot. If any of the property owners submit an objection letter, we schedule this public hearing so they have the opportunity to share any concerns they have with planning commission, which would be the ultimate deciding body. And I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
I think I would have the same question that Mr. Shanahan had for the last one. Do we have an idea of how many short-term rentals are in the area?
We do not, and I just confirmed, we don't have a map that shows all the short-term rentals. It's something that has been brought up that we could look into in the future, but at this point, we don't have that.
All right. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, we'd ask the applicant if they'd like to come forward and give us a little more information.
Hello. My name is Darren Castle. My address is 1721 South Berkshire Drive in Stillwater. We've owned the property for about five years now, maybe six, as a long-term rental. We're switching over to a short-term rental. We've had a couple of bad renters, so we're trying to keep the place cleaner, and when we bought the place five years ago, we remodeled it, and new countertops, paint, new flooring, all that stuff. So we're trying to keep it clean, and that's, I know that's one of the things that was talked about in the objection letter, was the gentleman was talking about how he wanted to keep the neighborhood looking nice, and that's something that we want as well. Like, for example, there are no overgrown trees on our property. Actually, our neighbor to the east is, we have a similar concern with our neighbor as the gentleman that proposed the objection has with his neighbors. And we've actually gone a step above. We've actually helped our neighbor cut down some of those trees along the fence line.
Yeah, can you speak to, again, some of the similar topics? Target market, how many renters you'll have, what kind of policies are you going to be enforcing on your renters? I assume that you're going to use either Airbnb, VRBO, can you just speak to some of those topics, please?
Yes, we will be using those websites. It's a three-bedroom house, it'll be six person max, two persons per room. Of course, no parties, that's when things turn for the worst usually.
Do you have sufficient parking?
Yes, we have a two-car garage and a two-car driveway.
And then, will you be the point of contact for renters and...
Yes.
Any issues that might occur?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think we have any other questions, thank you. We'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item to please come forward. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to please return and present alternatives.
Yes ma'am, so that tonight, the alternatives are to approve, defer, or deny the application.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is a text amendment, TXT 25-05.
Yes ma'am, so this is a text amendment for, which one is it, Sidewalk Cafes. This is for section 23105 of the land development code, and we have our list of sections here, but we'll walk through these one at a time so you can kind of see it. So right now, the, this is the current code, which I'll let you read through if you would like, but I'll give a brief explanation of kind of the reason why we're doing this text amendment. So Sidewalk Cafes, as we kind of see them have three components, you have the building, normally a restaurant, you have the cafe, and you have the sidewalk. So, right now, the way this code is currently written, I'll point you to that one sentence that's written in green, "The physical barrier shall leave at least six feet of sidewalk between the building and the table service area unobstructed and open to pedestrian travel." That means that you would have to have the building, the sidewalk, and then the cafe, so if you were walking by, you'd be walking in between the enclosed cafe and the building. If you look at kind of what's built around downtown and general best planning practices, it encourages the cafe to be against the building, so you have the building, the cafe, and then the sidewalk. If someone were to propose to build out right now, we would have to deny it based on the way this code is written, so that's why we're proposing this text amendment change that would bring us to this proposed verbiage that would not only allow you to have the sidewalk outside, but would require you to have the building and then the cafe and then the sidewalk along the outside. And it still keeps the six-foot of pedestrian walkway open and unobstructed. So that's the text amendment, and I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from staff?
So it still keeps the six-foot requirement just after the cafe?
Yes sir.
All right. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present alternatives.
Yes ma'am, so staff findings, a text amendment to the land development code is needed to allow for development to align with best practices and the built environment. The alternatives tonight are to recommend accepting, tabling, or denying the application. Staff recommends alternative number one, which is to accept findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed text amendment as presented.
Thank you. I think I for one am happy to see this text amendment, it's always seemed a little awkward the way that it was written before, and this seems to make much more sense as far as public way and planning goes, as well as business operations, so I think this is a very good, very good change.
I move we approve the text amendment as written.
I'd second that. We have a motion and a second. Motion passes 4-0. Next item is another text amendment, TXT 25-06.
Yes ma'am, so this text amendment addresses how the code addresses, I will use that twice, unit or condominium ownership. The general goal of this text amendment is to remove unit ownership as a use. I will say we have a list of sections here, and we'll walk through these one by one, but I do want to point out that there's one section in the code that does require that any unit or condominium ownerships that are created in the city have to follow state law, and that anytime one of those are created, that they have to, the applicant has to submit documentation to the development services director to prove that they meet that state law requirement. So, that part we're leaving in code, we're not touching, this is just the other sections that we're reviewing. So, right now currently, unit or condominium ownership is defined in 2396, which is the land use classification definitions. Since we're wanting to remove this as a use, we're removing it out of section 2396 where it defines land uses, and we're moving it to section 237, which is where we have the general definitions. So the definition is staying the same, it's just moving locations. Next, we have section 23152 point A, that's the commercial business district, specifically those uses that are permitted by right. Right now, unit or condominium ownership is permitted by right in the commercial business district, that's the only district where it's permitted. We're removing it as a use permitted by right in commercial business district. What that means is, it wouldn't be necessarily permitted by right in commercial business, the unit or condominium ownership would be permitted in any zoning district, because we're not regulating it as a use, it would just be based on the base use. I'll give an example of that in a bit. So the last change we have to make is in the table of allowed uses, which is the very last section in chapter 23, just to be consistent and remove unit ownership as a use. So the example I'll give, just to make this make a little more sense, is, for example, if you're building an apartment complex, whether those are apartments or those are condos, it doesn't change the base use, which is multifamily, so that would, the use of the zoning district would regulate that use, which would be multifamily, in the same way if you were building a neighborhood, whether it's rented or whether it's owned, we would regulate that as a single-family residential neighborhood. So that's kind of the reason why this text amendment is coming about. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
You answered the one question I had when I read the packet, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that clarified that for me as well.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present alternatives.
Yes ma'am, so the findings, the proposed text amendment would remove unit condominium ownership as a use. Unit or condominium ownership will still be allowed in any zoning district if documents are submitted that show that all state laws have been followed. The alternatives, once again, are to recommend approval, denial, or tabling this request. Staff recommends alternative number one, which is to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed text amendment as presented.
Thank you.
I would motion to approve the text amendment as presented and recommend approval from city council.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. And that concludes the public hearing section of the agenda. We will move into meeting summary for review and possible action. We have the regular meeting summary of September 9th. Is, is there a motion to approve or one to perhaps make any corrections or additions?
I will move to approve as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes three yes, one abstain. The next item is the regular meeting summary of September 16th. Are there any additions or corrections? Do I hear a motion to approve as submitted?
I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes three yes, one abstain. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners or the city attorney for discussion or possible action. The one item we do have listed is that the next regular meeting is October 21st. Do we have anything else from staff? Okay, great. Last item on the agenda is adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0, we are now adjourned.